Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June sixth, twenty twenty-three council meeting. If anyone needs amplifying headphones, we have those available. Just raise your hand and we will bring one to you. I'll stand and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I will. Councilmember Bod.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman was going to be a little late this evening, so Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Marinesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? City manager.
Mr. Mayor, if you will, please. I'd like to add resolution number one-two-seven-three-dash-oh-five-two-three concerning the Department of Ecology remedial action grant to the action agenda tonight, paving the three touch rule.
Thank you. That appears to the rest of the council. All right. Council, have any board reports to share? Well, all right. Oops, did I skip something? Has everyone had reviewed the items on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Write me a motion.
To accept the consent agenda as published.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Next on the agenda is a proclamation, which Deputy Mayor Schmidt will read.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Title of the proclamation is the city of Shelton, June two thousand twenty-three trident. Whereas the city of Shelton recognizes, the city of Shelton Council recognizes and proclaims the month of June two thousand and twenty-three as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, plus trident. And whereas Washington State has a longstanding tradition of upholding the dignity of the individual, supporting legal equality and faith treatment for all people regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, and ensuring that acts of discrimination will not be tolerated, and whereas members of the LGBTQ plus communities contribute to our city's success in immeasurable ways. And whereas the Shelton City Council observes June as a time to celebrate our dynamic LGBTQ plus community and foster a dialogue to promote health, state, and prosperous school climates and communities for all. And whereas the LGBTQ plus community continues to be a target of violence, harassment, and discrimination by many, and yet continues to thrive with support of LGBTQ plus affirming spaces, agencies, and allies, and whereas because the acts of courage of the millions who came out and spoke out to demand justice and of those who quietly toiled and pushed for progress, our country has made great strides in recognizing what these brave individuals long knew true, to be true in their hearts, that no person should be judged by anything but the content of their character. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Shelton City Council recognizes June two thousand twenty-three as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, plus trident month in the city of Shelton. All people are encouraged to join in celebrating diversity and promoting inclusion and equal protection under the law and to join together to eliminate discriminatory policies towards any culture, race, or group. Sign the sixth day of June two thousand twenty-three Shelton, Washington.
Parents, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Did you have any comments?
Uh, yeah, just quick comment. Yeah. The city of Shelton's had council goals that focus around community life, and I think it's important to make a place where everyone feels included and respects everyone's rights. We want to shine a light, though, on the struggles of the LGBTQ population and what they face on a day-to-day basis. But supporting their rights doesn't mean we ignore others' rights. We want to create a safe and accepting environment for all people, no matter their sexual orientation or gender identity. I look forward to continue to learn from others on this topic and to continue to work to make our community a great place.
Thank you, DePings. Anybody else?
Yes, well, I actually was not for this proclamation, but not because I don't believe in the things. I don't like the fact that I have to step outside of my political ideology to get into sexual or into gender ideology. So I don't agree with us doing it as a city, but it doesn't mean I don't agree with what it says. So, thank you.
I, um, I read this and I don't, I do not believe we as a city, it should be brought in on a government issue. It it has no place in government, so.
Anybody else?
I disagree. I think this is exactly what government should be doing, is recognizing everyone and their uniqueness and their, what they contribute to the community. So thank you very much, LGBTQ plus community.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for their comments, everybody for their written comments that came into the council this week, and you know what this is saying is people just have the right for life, liberty, to happiness. What is liberty? Liberty is the state of being free, unnecessary restrictions, being free to make your own choices. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Moving on, we're recessing from a regular meeting to open a public hearing. Finance Director might give in some information for us about amendment twenty twenty-three budget.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. As you know, last fall, we adopted a twenty twenty-three budget. But in our best plans, there are things that are overlooked and we need to come to you to amend the budget, and that's what this process is this evening to bring you consideration of a supplemental budget. I'm gonna bring your attention to think Exhibit B. One of the things I've been focusing on with you in the monthly financial reports is the fact that the twenty twenty-three general fund budget structurally is relying on ongoing expenses using the ending fund balance. And so one of the things that city leadership took a look at through this supplemental process is to bring for your consideration some reductions in the general fund to start that process of formally reducing some of our expenses to live more within the means of our revenue received. I do want to emphasize that no part of this reduction is for jail services, which you as a council made a commitment to spend for. This is bringing in some of our expenses in some other areas. For the general fund, we also need to realize some revenue that we didn't know about when we brought you the budget back in November. You'll notice my note on these, most of them are revenue-neutral grants and other donations that we've received subsequent to adopting the budget last November. A couple of the revenue-neutral items that we have agreed to are, is in the form of a payment to Mason County from the city's ARPA funds. We need, we didn't have that in the budget, so we need to have that authorized. The money's already there. As you know, we've received that over the course of the fiscal years twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And so just taking it across the funds, the net reduction then, we have, I, I want to emphasize, there's two hundred and eight thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars in reductions to the general fund. That represents about a one-point-nine percent reduction, so those would be for your consideration. Then the revenue positive or neutral, but revenue items bring the net reduction to fifty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars for the general fund. In the street fund, those reductions, I can reassure you and Public Works Director Harris is here if you want more information, but these were identified as items that were unnecessary in that area, paying for some supplies and utilities that aren't having to be paid for, so they were just inflating that amount. And as you know, the general fund makes a large transfer to the street fund, so having that correction just trues it up to be more in line with what we're actually spending. And then out on the side of the capital resources fund, we had not realized that the, we serve as that pass-through agent for the construction going on it for at least the utility infrastructure part of Veterans Village, that that was going to extend into twenty twenty-three, and so this is just, again, it's revenue-neutral. We make the payment, we get the reimbursement funding from the Department of Commerce, so it's just giving us authorization by you formally to continue to do that. And then under the equipment maintenance and rental fund, it's a one-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-one-hundred-dollar. We didn't receive those two items in twenty twenty-two as we had planned due to supply chain issues. They're going to come in in twenty twenty-three. We didn't catch it or know in, really in time for November. I guess maybe deep in our hearts, we were hoping they would come in by December thirty-first and they didn't, so it's just authorizing those that were already budgeted to be spent out of the EM and R fund. So that's kind of a broad summary of the supplemental that's before you, and I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mike. This isn't any place that city staff or council wants to be tonight in recommending reductions in our general fund, but it's a place that we are today. We have reduced FTEs, people that work here at the city of Shelton, people that live in our community, and people that as of July first will no longer be working here. It's a difficult decision. It's going to reduce services both internally and externally to our community. We will provide more comment on that later. We're still working through that, but as of July first, we'll certainly see reductions within our customer service counter upstairs. We have done our best to maintain the council's goals, which is plan strategically, be physically responsible, and provide public safety. So you're not seeing any reductions in public safety at this point as we move forward through the formulation of the twenty twenty-four budget, which starts by the end of this month. Everything's on the table and we're considering all cuts at all times for the general fund. We have a, most likely, a a reduction that approaches somewhere over a million dollars at this point, so we have to be really creative. We have to find resources that we may not have found before to supplement our budget. We have to find better ways to do things. We have to perform and form our duties with less employees, and where we know that going into this, it's not going to be easy, but we're committed to working through this process and providing the council a balanced budget moving into twenty twenty-four. So again, there'll be more information coming about. We will highlight our platforms that are available to our community, like online bill paying, our mobile app for code enforcement, other other resources as well as our online permit portal. So hopefully, any disruption at the front counter and service that isn't available, we'll make sure everybody has the opportunity to access those, those platforms and perform any business functions with the city of Shelton that they may see.
Thank you, Mark. Donna, did anyone sign up public testimony on amending the twenty twenty-three budget?
No, they haven't, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Do you want the audience to like to speak on the twenty twenty-three amended budget?
Sure. Okay, you came in on tailwind of that. Appreciate the ability to be here. So we got a budget shortfall. Didn't we just approve purchasing some camera trucks and some expensive vehicles and things like that? I mean, is that something that we need to curtail and put that on the back burner to get through this and into twenty twenty-four? How much additional funding does our street population cause us in garbage collection and things like that, and the additional police response to things? So just a couple of things to think about and look at. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right. Maybe I have a reading of ordinance number two-zero-zero-two-dash-zero-four-two-three.
Ordinance number two-zero-zero-two-dash-zero-four-two-three. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending the annual budget for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Move the report ordinance number two-zero-zero-two-dash-zero-four-two-three to twenty, city council meeting for further consideration.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Oh, all right. We have a motion to second to port ordinance number two-zero-zero-two-dash-zero-four-two-three to the June twentieth city council meeting for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Public hearing is closed, we're back to our regular meeting. Public Works Director Jay Harris has details about vacating a portion of Fifth Street.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, Jay Harris, Republic Works Director. So Fifth Street, which is on the other side of this building here, between Coda and Grove, is primarily used for police parking, and the city received a grant from the state to install fencing around the police parking area and electronic gates for both, and this to limit public access into the police parking area. Patrol officers can be a little safer getting in and out of their vehicles is, is the goal. And so the, the street actually has to be close to the public. The electric gates will only be available, you know, for emergency services. And but the sidewalk on the east side along the parking lot and the new garden area would remain open for public travel. To be able to put the fence in and to actually close, you know, the, the street to the traveling public, it's proposed that, that right-of-way is vacated, and the city owns both sides of the right-of-way there. There are, there's a water line, sewer line, gas lines, utility lines. So the right-of-way will be vacated, you know, for vehicular travel, but will still retain a utility easement for stormwater and such over the right-of-way, and then just the public pedestrian, the sidewalk will be an easement over that to allow that sidewalk to remain open. This is the first action item I'm presenting to you tonight. On June twentieth, I come back to you, you know, for, actually, this is a business item, then I come back to you for the action item for the resolution. There's actually an ordinance that needs to happen here. This is following state law, so since you guys have multiple touches, you're going to hear this three other times, so this is the first briefing on this item this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay. Donna, do we have any public comment on vacating a portion of Fifth Street?
Well, I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor. There's someone named Emily who signed up to speak about zoning, and I'm not sure if that's this topic. What's that?
Not for this item. Anyone in the audience like to talk about vacating Fifth Street? All right, do we have a motion?
To forward resolution number one-two-seven-two-dash-zero-five-two-three to the June twenty twenty-three, city council meeting for further consideration.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Yes, are we keeping it like as a drive-through, so it'll be gated on both ends? So we're still?
Both ends are off the gate, yes.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Another reason for this, Mark, is because there's a blind spot coming out of the, the police department where they can't see out of the building.
Yeah, a little bit when they pull out, yeah, from their stalls and traffic's coming past, and they need to pay, pay particular attention. But this is really a, a, a safety measure for our first responders. When they, when they leave the building, the, the the door is inset from the exterior wall, so if you ever think about that, when you open the door and you can't look left or right before you enter out into the public way, you're putting yourself in a harm's way, and that's a real concern for our first responders. When they're moving in and out of their cars, they've got their equipment, they're moving in and out, it's, it's just, you know, a, a safety measure that we want to make sure that we address for them, make them comfortable and as safe as possible, and it's something that our state delegation agreed to by providing us this grant, need to inform this project.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion to second to port resolution number one-two-seven-two-dash-zero-five-two-three to the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three city council action agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Senior Planner Jason Dos, with information for us about annexation.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. In April of this year, the council approved a resolution which green-lighted, so to speak, a single ownership forty-acre piece of property that's located north of the Shelton Springs subdivision, but south of Island Lake in our UGA, our urban growth area.
Jason, I'm going to end up to you real quick, if you don't mind. We need to open a public hearing.
Oh, sorry, Mayor. We're recessing from a regular meeting to open a public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. As I was saying, I approved a resolution which green-lighted the single ownership vacant piece of property to, to petition to come into city limits, which they have done. Within a week of that resolution, we received the formal petition from the property owner to annex into city limits. I, I should note that the property in question has undergone review of a thirty-six-lot subdivision through Mason County. That was done, the review was done in concert with the city's engineering department, because this subdivision relies solely on city utilities and city streets to access, so water, sewer, they would, they would access through Basil Avenue in the Shelton Springs subdivision. And it became apparent that the easiest path for them to move forward was to annex. So what you have before you this evening is an ordinance that we are recommending approval of that would formally annex this piece of property in the city limits, and what that would do then is exclusively have review of their subdivision. When they come in to, with actually engineered plans to install the streets, to grade the site, to, to do all the formal improvements you need to do to record a subdivision, it would be done exclusively by the city and not this kind of convoluted joint review we've been doing to this point.
Thank you, Jason. Donna, has anyone sent a public comment on this annexation?
I don't think so, unless this is the item Emily wants to speak on. Okay, no, no, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on the annexation? Right. Maybe I have a reading of ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes. Yes, we could hear you.
I'm just wondering if that's watershed land, and is this the land that we talked about a couple of years ago about these guys from somewhere far away coming in and building all these houses? No, so where is the property?
Maybe you can now go out and talk to Jason about that, if he's willing to tell you where that is or show you. All right. Anybody else have any questions? All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to forward ordinance number two.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor. We need a reading of the ordinance.
Oh, I was starting to do that, wasn't I? We have a reading of ordinance number two-zero-zero-five-dash-zero-five-two-three.
Ordinance number two-zero-zero-five-dash-zero-five-two-three. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Shelton, Washington, annexing certain property located within the city of Shelton's urban growth area into the city of Shelton corporate limits.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move forward ordinance number two-zero-zero-five-two-five-two-three of June twenty twenty-three action agenda for further consideration.
Second.
Comments or questions? All right, we have a motion to second for ordinance number two-zero-zero-five-dash-zero-five-two-three to the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three action agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Public hearing is closed. And now Recreation Coordinator Jordan has details for us about park regulation.
Upstirring.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, I bring you some recommendation on updates for park regulation ordinance on behalf of the Parks Advisory Committee. And this was also partnered with Mason County Health Department, who provided us with some data and is in support of the committee to make these updated changes. Some, we also did some basic cleanup in the language. Some of that was to show that if alcohol was to be used in the park, it has to be through special events only. If shelter or ballfield use is made, it needs to be through a reservation. Temporary signage for any events, we need to make sure it's in proper location, so it's not a hazard or distraction to drivers or first responders, and removing of, like, fishing, because we don't have any public water access in city limits. But the main thing I'm bringing to you is to ban vaping in all city parks. This was a request, first off, through the Mason County Health Department, and it does coincide with the county's park regulations as well. Vaping and e-cigarettes among the youth is growing and is, is more of a problem. Over twenty-five percent of high school students are regularly, regularly, excuse me, using vaping products. The teenage use of vaping has increased over a thousand percent from two thousand eleven through twenty nineteen. So these impacts are very similar to our current smoking ban that we have in city parks, which was implemented back in twenty twelve. And it just has a negative impact on the enjoyment on our parks currently. So this was also, won't be a proactive enforcement, but it's mainly to show public awareness and voluntary compliance is the goal for this ban. We would also be changing our park signage to show that as well. Um, any questions?
Thank you, Jordan. Donna, anyone sign up for public testimony on the park regulations?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
All right, maybe a reading of ordinance number two-zero-zero-seven-dash-zero-five-two-three.
Ordinance number two-zero-zero-seven.
Donna.
Yes.
My name is state name, and if you're from the city or the county or elsewhere.
My name is Kate Robert. I am currently residing in the county, lifelong resident of Shelton and Mason County. That is why I came here today, was to speak on that. Apologize for my dress. I'm currently also at the ballpark with my kiddos. I just really wanted to speak on that because I, I, I used tobacco products about over eleven years ago, and that's one of the things that I'm trying to break the cycle for my kiddos, that among many other things. When I was a little girl, I used to watch my moms and my auntie smoke cigarettes and vape, or not vape, but smoke cigarettes and many other things, and I couldn't wait to grow up and do that myself. I used to think it was cool, you know, just pretending with my candy cigarettes. My husband and I and our children will play, will be at the park, and there will be people vaping, smoking, smoking marijuana. And we have politely asked people not to do that, and because the signs don't say no vaping. Yeah, so I just would like to break the cycle for our children, and that's why I came here today, because I know it's going to be a topic, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? We, we don't clap or boo in here. All right. All right. Maybe I have a reading of ordinance number two-zero-zero-seven-dash-zero-five-two-three.
Ordinance number two-zero-zero-seven-dash-zero-five-two-three. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending chapter eight-point-six-eight of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to park regulations.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to place ordinance number two-zero-zero-seven-dash-zero-five-two-three on the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three action agenda for further consideration.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Oh. He's gone. Do you have any comments, questions with city manager? No.
Well, right, your mayor has a question.
Oh, there you are. I didn't see that. All right, does anybody have any comments, questions for Jordan? I know this has been a high priority of the Health Department for quite some time. You know, I'm kind of glad that we, we got this done. I've been down there for movies at the park or music at the park, and somebody sitting in a group of fifty people and, and smoking or vaping and blowing it, and people just like going, just looking, and nobody really says anything to them. I think this is probably a good idea, so. All right.
Just wanted to add that, yes, it's a really good opportunity to say, hey, can you not do that around my kids or me, please? And that just gives everyone a little bit more leverage to make sure that they don't get smoke in the face.
All right. Okay. We have a motion to second to place ordinance number two-zero-zero-seven-dash-zero-five-two-three on the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three action agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Public hearing is closed, we're back to our regular meeting. There are no action items, so we'll move the city manager report.
Actually, when I about that.
So there is an action item.
Yeah, thank you so much, Deputy Mayor, council members. So I am bringing to you resolution number one-two-seven-three-oh-five-two-three, and I'm asking for waiver of the three-touch rule action agenda tonight. Because this is a ongoing project and remedial action funds from the Department of Ecology to address the C Street landfill closure. There's some critical timelines here, because the contractor is working as we speak and building us as we speak, so it's important that we're able to process those payments in a timely manner for the contractor, but also receive payments from the State Department of Ecology to reimburse the city for these funds. The city's been very fortunate to receive funding several different times from the State Department of Ecology, and we have some more funding coming our way with the ecology grant acceptance that they will soon be sending us. We just don't know when that's going to be. So in order to stage ourselves properly, to sign those acceptance agreements, receive those funds, and not be in limbo, you know, in between council meetings, we're asking for adoption of the resolution tonight that would authorize the interim city manager to sign those grant acceptance documents. That would authorize the interim city manager to sign those grant acceptance documents uh so we can move forward and get the C Street landfill project completed as soon as possible.
Thanks for that. I know nobody signed up for this. Anybody in the audience like to talk about the acceptance of a grant from Department of Ecology for a CC landfill, E Street landfill? All right, um, motion.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
We have to read the resolution.
Oh, well, I don't have it on my.
I know. Are you ready?
Read the resolution.
Resolution number one two seven three dash zero five two three. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, accepting a remedial action grant for the C Street landfill environmental cleanup project. And authorizing the interim city manager to sign a funding agreement with the Department of Ecology.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion? Move to adopt resolution number one two seven three zero five two three as presented.
Do we have to wait for the control?
Second.
We adopting, wait up.
Did you say whatever?
No, you're adopting it.
Okay, comments or questions? The landfill has been a priority of the city for many years and we're coming to an end and we appreciate Department of Ecology. But their funding, otherwise, uh, don't know if we could have done. So we have a motion in the second to adopt resolution number one two seven three dash zero five two three as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, so we are on city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think uh be remiss not to uh recognize uh the forest festival activities this last weekend, the tremendous effort by the Forest Festival Committee. Uh, all the volunteers, the business owners, um, and everybody involved with that, including our city staff. It's a, it's a task for us to get our streets ready, do the street closures, maintain the field. Uh, from the carnival to the um, to the parade and to the uh car show and. Firework show and everything in between, but they enjoy it. They love working for their community. They love providing the service for our community and they take pride in that. So I think it's really important that we recognize everybody involved with that tonight um and pull off a very successful event. Um, there's a lot of people in our downtown. Uh, the farmer's market expanded to, I believe, seventy stalls over the weekend on Saturday. And so just added more people uh enjoying our downtown, enjoying our new facility down here as well. So. Um, I think it's something to celebrate and continue that momentum into our summer season. So we want to recognize that. Um, thank you to uh. Uh, Mayor Anisco, Deputy Mayor Schmidt and Councilmember Peterson for um stepping up to the uh budget committee. Uh, we will be bringing uh a calendar and a scope of work and a timeline to you here by the end of the month. As we work through um continuing to uh get our actuals um put together for, you know, mid-year. That's typically kind of the the timeline that we have. We get to June, we have our mid-year um actuals put together for expenditures. And revenue and it gives us a little better idea of what to expect. We compare it to last year and see what kind of trends are happening as well. So. Uh, we'll be providing information to uh the committee members and the councils as we move forward throughout this year in this uh budget process. And um I'll go back to a comment made tonight. Um, there are uh general fund issues that we're dealing with today. Uh, those are different than enterprise funds. So some of the purchases made recently, like the camera truck, uh, have been purchased out of uh storm and sewer funds. And so those are healthy funds that uh, and this is even equipment for, again, some of the council's priorities, which is maintain our infrastructure, right? Uh, so that those funds could be, those purchases could be purchased out of the general fund. But the, but those, the funds to purchase that out of the utility could not supplement or or supplant uh. Expenditures within the general fund. So uh, we, we have to separate those, those funds as best we can and make sure they're going to the right place. But um, looking ahead, um, on June thirteenth, the study session uh was changed about a week ago. We're going to talk about animal control and shelter services in the community. Uh, so looking forward to bringing some options and alternatives to the council. To consider that evening. Uh, and then on the twentieth, there's a new business agenda item. The um funding authorization for Wallace and Shelton Springs intersection improvements. This is uh grant funds that need to be obligated uh to some design and study to move us to a direction uh in the future of how that intersection will be laid out. How it best performs. So um, and then on the twentieth, we've also had an executive session to consider the performance of the public employee. And that's all I have tonight for you.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, thanks for ranting for us. I'm still so tired from the forest. I forgot to mention that it was a great, it's a frosting weekend. From the parade to the car show and uh everything that they did and I'd like to thank Sports Festival Committee and all the other groups that were involved in that. It was just a great weekend and the weather was great. So that always makes it better. Any other comments or questions?
I think it was probably one of the best ones. There were probably more people out at this one than I've seen in a long time. Weather was great. The public works department is awesome. And everybody who works with them and around them getting ready for the parade.
It was a great weekend. It was, all right. Okay, we're at uh this time, remember, are invited to make public comment on any topic that we have not talked about tonight. Donna, do we have anybody signed up to make public comments?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. About Emily. And Emily, can you tell me what, what is your last name? Are you T H?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so recently the house next door to me down the street on Cota was sold. Um, and we've learned, my neighbors and I, that it was sold to Thurston County Mental Health Services. We're in a residential area. We're curious if the city was aware of that. And uh, we're, we're all opposed for numerous reasons. Um, we're trying to figure out what to do about it, how to stop it. Uh, we think it's something that should be in the commercial zone area where it's more suitable.
Mark, can you?
Uh, yeah. With, if you don't mind hanging out after the meeting for a few minutes and I might be able to follow up with you.
Is this something similar to what Emily? This is something similar to what the, our elected reps were talking to us about earlier and said.
I'm not aware of it at all, so we'll have to do a little research and and find out uh what the intent is.
Yeah, thanks for bringing it.
Yeah.
Okay, next we have Billy Thomas.
Hi, thank you. Um. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, um, community members, uh, thank you for allowing me the time to come up and speak tonight. I just wanted to put uh forward my thanks for the proclamation that was read this evening. Uh, I understand that that was a difficult choice for some of you. Uh, I wanted to say thank you for putting personal politics or personal thoughts aside. Uh, and creating a welcoming, inclusive and embracing atmosphere for the city of Shelton. Um, it's proclamations like this that serve um messages to our community to show that people are seen, that they're valued, that they're respected. Uh, that we want them here and to stay here. Uh, we don't want them to leave or feel ashamed or shunned in any way. So thank you for putting that forward. Uh, I stand before you uh as a community leader and tonight I'm here with my husband as well. Uh, and to be able to be in this community authentically as myself, I just can't give enough thanks for that. So, thank you very much.
Next we have Jim Morrell.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. Um. I also wanted to say thank you. Uh, two and a half years ago, I was approached by one of the um. One, one of the council members who asked me to have a conversation about diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, that happened in my office and about six or seven months later, at a council planning session, I was asked to facilitate. A conversation around diversity, equity and inclusion with five of the seven of you, um, council members Sherman and Gutierrez. I don't think we're on board at that point. Um, through that conversation, one of the things that came up was. We'd like to know and we'd like you to tell us. When we can and are doing something as a city that is adverse to inclusive activity or action. And when we do something that is supportive of that. You've done that by issuing this proclamation tonight. It is a proclamation that sends a really positive message to many more people than you will ever know. And a message that for some. May be supportive of who they are. And for some may protect their life ongoing because of your support. It's a, creates a culture of a community that I think is a community that is what we want to have. By having a specific time for people that have been marginalized, set aside as the month of June for Pride Month or this Pride proclamation. Is no different and I would encourage the council to consider other proclamations. Such as Hispanic Heritage Month, which runs from mid-September to mid-October, or perhaps Native American Month in the month of November. Or Women's History Month, which is annually held in March. It's really no difference. Than any of us or any of you celebrating a member of your family's birthday, recognizing how they stand apart, how they contribute to the family. How they contribute to their circle of friends, their community and others around them. We don't have a birthday for all. We have a birthday for Jim or a birthday for insert your name. That's typically the way that works. Your commitment makes a difference that goes far beyond words on a page. Other words that are spoken, written or said also make a difference that can impact and affect the culture of this community. The community that we all love, the community we all enjoy and the community that we want to be supportive. But I think everybody's opportunity to believe what they they believe. The part, um. So just in closing, the proclamation communicates a message that I am accepted as much as a community leader as as for who I am. I thank you for that. I thank you for the time and dedication. This didn't happen overnight. The process of your learning started two and a half years ago. This isn't the first time this is being done. This is the second year in a row that you've issued this proclamation. Uh, look forward to the third next year. Thank you.
Next we have Jenny Brush.
My name's uh, it's named Jenny Brush. Um, I don't care if you're gay or you're lesbian, that's your belief. But I don't agree with the proclamation of Pride Month. You don't have Christian month. You don't have Mother's, Mother's Month. You don't have Dad's Month, people that have also contributed to society or have their hardships. I guess I'm tired of things being shut down my throat and I think that we can better spend our money on things within our city that help all. I think that we should just respect each other, but I don't mean, think we need cross the road to do that. Thank you.
Next is Dana Anderson.
Thank you for finding me. I uh am Emily's neighbor and have been down on Plaquemara since nineteen ninety one. And also I'm concerned about that Thurston County Mental Health finding the house next door to me. And I did talk to a lady that said that um. They're just using it as a rental and they're bringing over homeless. And mental people. And um drug recovering people. So I'm just really concerned. Everything I have for. Thirty some years has poured into that and I'm single, she's single, Denise is single that lives across the street. And then we have another lady next to Emily that's also single. So we're just really, really concerned about this and our property values and our safety. And um, I'm probably the only one that misses the railroad tracks. I mean, I don't miss going over them, but they were like a speed bump. And so from the trailer park to the stop sign on seven, it's not uncommon for people to go fifty miles an hour. So uh, I'm praying for uh speed bumps. Thank you.
Next is Philip Wilson.
Good evening, uh, city council members. My name is Philip Wilson. I'm a Christian and being faithful to Christ is the most important thing to me. As a Christian, I believe that we should be gentle with people and ruthless with ideas. All have sinned and fallen short of the glory of God, including me. Fortunately, because of his great love, his fault for his fallen creatures, God devised the rescue plan. And sent his son to rescue us from the consequences of our sin. The idea of male and female comes to us from the very first chapter of Genesis. Genesis one twenty seven says, so God created man in his own image. In the image of God, he created him, male and female, he created them. Every person in here has been created in God's image, that intangible part of us that makes us different. Than the animal, than the animals regardless of what we may believe. And this belief is one of the founding dogmas of our country. In the early seventeen hundreds, Pastor John Wise preached that all men are created equal and endowed by their creator with certain unalienable rights. That among these were life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. These beliefs are under serious threat now from a new religious orthodoxy going around that claims that the most important part of us. Is our sexual desires and feelings and that as a society, we should define ourselves by them. This necessarily will mean sexualizing our children. These ideas are fundamentally at odds with each other. As one resident of Mason County, I want to register my disagreement with the city making a proclamation of this belief system during their holy month. Due to this belief system, members of our federal Supreme Court claim not to know what a woman is. Free speech is being threatened with third parties controlling what individuals say. Women in women's sports are being displaced by stronger male competitors. In women's prison, up at thirty, women are being sexually assaulted and impregnated by men who are claiming to be women. In hospitals around our nation, children are being confused, children confused by our educational system are being brought in, giving life-altering surgeries. Which will make them impotent for the rest of their lives. Part of this belief system includes what are called M.A.S.T. or minor attracted persons, meaning they're sexually aroused by children. And seek to normalize this in society as well. At one time, I might have thought this impossible, but today it appears that all is moving forward in that direction. These ideas are fundamentally at war with those of the founders of this nation. Where do these ideas come from? After all, the activities represented by these letters, L D B T, have been going on for time immemorial. A hundred years ago, Antonio Gramsci sat in an Italian jail wondering why communism was not progressing. As Marx had predicted, in which he said that the advanced industrial nations were the ones that would become communist. He realized that it was the pre-political institutions that kept communism from moving forward. Thank you.
That's all that we have signed up, Mr. Mayor.
Was there anyone else in the audience like, like to speak a dinner or public comment?
I don't know how to formally, thank you.
Just your name and are you a city or county employee?
Yes, I, my name is Claudia Swasey. And I work at the YMCA and I, I, I'm here to speak um from my heart. Cause I had a few kids that were going to come in here to speak, but they're not coming in. So I'm going to speak on behalf of the kids and they, they're. There was lots of smiles when I talked about the proclamation today at the Y and the, the smiles. And lots of conversation. And in that conversation, they said, well, I want to go, I want to go and speak and I want to ask. I want to ask the, the citizens of Shelton if. If they indeed want a place of peace, doesn't it, isn't it so that we can all feel safe? And this proclamation makes me feel safe. And I had another uh employee identify as they, them. They come to the Y because they feel safe and it's them. And they want it for the, the entire city. And um. Again, that's speaking on behalf of the kids. Thank you very much.
Do you live in the county, business owner? I'll go on record as opposing the proclamation. Uh, I don't agree with it. As Jenny stated, I don't care what your life choices are, who your partners are. If you're pink, yellow, purple, have one leg or three, I don't care. But we don't need a proclamation or a piece of paper that makes you safe. We have things that are called laws. Ordinances, values, things like that that keep us safe. So, I mean, how many, how many months do we need? You know, I mean, there's only twelve months. So if we have a proclamation for every little thing that comes up, do we have to go to a twenty-four month year? I mean, where, where do we end? You know, that's, that's my point. Where do, where do we end? Uh, that's all I've got to say about that. With the sheer increase in our street population, uh, we've got some major issues going on at rural parks. With the sheer increase in our street population, we've got some major issues going on at Brewer Park. I just went through there and took some pictures of the garbage dump that we have growing there. Who knows, maybe pretty soon we'll have to send some EPA people out there just like we did C Street. Seems to be a pretty, you know, I mean, we passed a street camping ordinance. It just gets ignored. I don't, you know, I mean, you guys have heard me say this a hundred times. By not holding people accountable, you are going to hold them at ten percent of their abilities. Holding people accountable helps them step up and lift themselves out of the quagmire and use the services that we have available. There is nobody in Shelton that goes hungry. I have pictures, I just sent them to you. We've got fruit, bananas, steaks, chicken, ribs, left all over town. We have bowling with cabbage. Okay, I mean, why? I don't understand. We've got an outfit that feeds in Brewer Park when Community Lifeline feeds in the same area. We have so many, we have so much food around here that we're bringing people in that aren't even from this area. So I get really confused and concerned about that. You know, we have the Community Lifeline and they have a conditional use permit. We've got a hearings examiner that we're going to be going through. I I hope that you guys all read that, understand it, hold that conditional use permit, look at the sections in it and make sure you're familiar with that. We do not need to have any other additional housing for those individuals. We, our chief of police has resigned as of November. Okay? Most times in big business, you accept that resignation effective immediately. Why would you do that? Because it's like a lame duck presidency. What are they going to do to assist our our city and our community? Thank you.
We don't normally respond, but our chief of police is retiring in November, not resigning.
Now, that's the third time you've made a statement, right? Maybe you shouldn't. Thank you.
Right. Yes.
My name is Denise Graves and I live on Cota Street with their neighbors. And I too am puzzled about there being a homeless shelter going in. But the one thing I'm here about is my neighbor. She's got junk cars there, she's got tweakers going in and out all the times of night, the alleys are blocked. You know, with her cars and everything and nobody's doing anything about it. She's building onto her trailer. And nobody's doing anything about it. And would you want to live next to that, a junkyard and a garbage dump? And that's what it's turning out to be. She's got everybody bringing their stuff there and dumping it in her yard and it just goes to waste. I wish somebody would do something. Thank you.
Yes.
My name's Mary Eagleson. I live in the city of Shelton. I want to just make a statement here about people talking about the difference between the gay community and having special days. And I think the problem with our country right now is we're dividing everything. Everything has to be separate. We have this, we have this community, we have that community, we have this, we have that. And people wonder why we can't all get along. It's because people get mad if if it isn't there, if it isn't a gay thing. They get mad if it isn't a Latino thing. They get mad if it isn't this. Well, then you're going to have to have seniors saying, well, where's our time? And young people saying, where's their time? And it's becoming, we're dividing everything. Let's quit dividing everything and let's come be more equal. I mean, everybody can be whoever they want. I have gay people in my family. My biological brother, when I met him, was, but I accept him for who he is. We just have to learn to accept each other. It may not be with our beliefs, but we aren't them. They aren't us. Everybody is different. Everybody wears different clothes. Everybody thinks different. Everybody goes to different churches. We don't get mad because somebody went to the Catholic church. We don't get mad because somebody went to the Baptist church. We're dividing everything. People, come on, quit dividing everything. Let's just learn to all be together and accept each other. Let people be who they are. If you don't like them, don't be around them. Nobody's forcing you, nobody's forcing anybody. But quit dividing everything. Let's just become a unity. Let's just become a unit. Let's become a town that's proud because we accept everybody for who they are. And let's just be that way instead of trying to divide everything and and have this and have that and have ordinance for this and have ordinance. We're going to have so many ordinances for city council and the city isn't going to know what to do. And pretty soon you're going to have to draw a line. Where do you draw the line then? Once you allow it to go on and on and on, then there's no stopping. Let's just, let's not have all these ordinance to divide who people are. Let's just have everybody learn to get along and accept each other for who they are. That's all I have to say. Thanks, council.
Yes, Lauren.
I just want to share a personal story. My son is from a marginalized community. He is Asian. When we adopted him, however, because my husband and I are not, part of the adoption paperwork said he could not get any advantage of being Asian. That didn't make him any less Asian. But we were fine with that because we wanted him to be his own person. As he started school, he had the normal things that happen in school. He came home one day and said the kids were telling him in the playground he wasn't an American. Well, instead of making it Asian Day or Adoption Day, his teacher asked me if I would bring in his natural, naturalization paperwork for show and tell on the next show and tell. And I didn't know, but she was a naturalized Canadian. She brought in her paperwork and she sat and had a discussion with the kids of all the various ways people can become American and how we are as a group, all American. She didn't target him that way. Later in school, he came home and asked me why his eyes were like they are because somebody called him Javice, which was kind of surprising in that era. But again, the teacher had during one of their circle activities, a how are different, holding arms out and realizing every single one of us are a different tone, every single one of us have a different shade. Every single one of us have a different shape of eyes, different color. It not necessarily from our nationality, but it does have, it plays into our genetic pool. But again, the teacher did not spotlight him, make it Korea Day. She just let it all be part of, we are all part of this group of humans. And I'm so grateful that he went through school during a time where he was not spotlighted but included. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Hi, Bill Wells, pastor of the Beginning Christian Church, and I just want to say that I'm opposed to the proclamation. When you stand before God, you got to give an account. And I think the Bible is pretty clear where it stands. And I'm most concerned that the proclamation does affect children. So in that regard, I would just encourage you to not sign any proclamations.
Right. Anyone else?
My name is Melissa Upson and I am a county resident, not a city resident. I have children who attend schools in in the city of Shelton, however. I'm just here to share some information about a movie that was being scheduled to play at Timberland Regional Library this Saturday. Another mother, Rebecca Beck Tolt, informed myself and several others about it and it was titled Front Cover. And I'm just going to read some of what appears in that movie that according to Timberland Regional Library was for all ages, targeted minimum age of twelve, but no checks, just suggested so open to all. So this is what appears in the movie. Looking for hot sex, no string fun, must be under thirty. Blacks and Asians need not apply. Hey, what's up handsome? Horny. Top or bottom? Top. You? How big are you? Big enough. Seriously, how big? Seven point five and very hard. I can spank you if you like. I watched the movie myself and there's a pretty long sex scene in it as well. So the movie is unrated. It does have a disclaimer of profanity, nudity, and sex in the movie. When I inquired with the library, I received no response. I emailed all of you as well. I don't think anyone on the council has replied to me. When I didn't get a reply, I asked others to help me intervene and they did. Some of our elected officials got involved and asked more questions and the movie has now been swapped for a different movie and the library is saying that it was an accident that just the wrong movie got on the flyer. So the flyer was printed and distributed. It was not on the library's website calendar of events, but it was on the Facebook page. It still was as of an hour ago and I asked on Facebook for the library to alter it since it had been. I had received an email that it would be changed and they said the title originally listed was an accident. Thank you for the reminder to change this post. That was the only response I got from anyone at the library other than the response that was provided to some of our elected officials. So I was ignored, several other parents were ignored. It was just like, no big deal, just deal with it until other more powerful influential people get involved. And then it was an accident, which is not true, was not an accident. And then someone from the county today, I know some county workers went up there and checked and shared with other people at the county that the library said there was nothing like that going on and they didn't know anything about it. So then it kind of made me look stupid, like I didn't know what I was talking about, but I do have all of that in writing and emails. The library acknowledging that it was going to be played. So if anybody wants more info, actually, it should all be in your in your emails. So people should, I don't know, trust some of us parents that are paying attention to stuff like that.
Good evening, council members, mayor, deputy mayor. I would just, my name is Jennifer Haugland, hope to be a future city resident. I just want to ask that the council and mayor and deputy mayor would consider how they respond to citizens when they send in emails of concerns. I was concerned about Pride Proclamation as well and express that to all of you as committee men and committee women and mayor, deputy mayor. And my concern is, again, what has been voiced here tonight is that we need to come together as a community. We need to find the things that we are alike in and not continue this pathway of divisiveness. And so I would like to see us come together with something more positive and put that forward instead. I'd love to see the city be more proactive in this department in creating their own proclamation for how we can be a a community that loves one another and is able to get along with each other regardless of how we identify with ourselves and what our sexual preferences are, which I believe should stay in the bedroom. And we need to protect our children now more than ever. And I'm a mental health counselor and I know that because I see it from the other side of the desk, so to speak. So please hear me when I say that. This is causing more mental health issues and more suicidal ideations in children that are uninformed and unable to protect themselves when they make decisions about themselves based on grooming and ideologies that are out there that are harmful for them. They're not old enough to make these decisions yet and we need to be the adults and protect them on this. I would also ask that the council would respond to emails that we send in out of respect to us just because we took the time to write you. Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I did receive many written public comments, so I have a list of names to read and then those comments, oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
My name's Alice Wells.
Go ahead, Alice.
Okay. First, I'm going to say I'm not a hater. I don't hate anybody, so I don't want that label stuck on me, okay? Secondly, I want to say that I'm a Christian before anything. I'm a Christian. We have a church here in in the city limits, the Beginning Christian Church, and my husband and I pastor that church. So I just have a question I would like to ask everybody. And the question is this. In the LGBTQ+, what part of that is not a sin? Okay, thank you.
Right.
Yes. And Mr. Mayor, these written public comments will be posted to the website tomorrow. We received comments from Bill and Alice Wells, Gigi Olson, Susan Kirchhoff, Sarah Clinton, Kelly Oblazalo, Matthew Melendez, Billy Thomas, Jim Morrell, Jake McGee, Jennifer Haugland, Keith Arns Meyer, Diane Eaton, Philip Wilson, Bob and Laurlyn Rogers, Jill McKnight, Linda and Adrian Amar, Shannon Klassel, another one from Jill McKnight, Karen Leaf, Anna Miller, Sue Ikes, Karen Shade, Rachel McCoy, and Derek Melendez Leegan.
Thank you, Dawn.
You're welcome.
You also have a U.I. for discussion. All right, our next meeting is scheduled June twentieth at six P.M. We also have study session June thirteenth at six P.M. This meeting is scheduled at seven oh six P.M.